Okay, good evening. Today is Monday, October 20th, 2025, and the time is 7:00 PM. This meeting of the Prosper ISD Board of Trustees is hereby called to order according to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Representing the quorum this evening, we have Mr. Webb, Mr. Dial, Mrs. Dixon, Mr. Cavender, Mr. Linker, Mr. Van Wolf, and myself, Bill Beavers. The Board of Trustees extends a heartfelt gratitude to our entire Prosper ISD community. In Prosper ISD, we unite students, families, teachers, staff, and the larger community in the relentless pursuit of excellence. Together, we champion; we support every student's journey to excellence; together, we cultivate; we create meaningful connections across our growing community; together, we empower; we develop our people to lead and inspire growth; together, we prosper; we unite in shared purpose while honoring individuality; and together, we also went four and a half Semifinalists this past week for the second straight week. So, uh, exactly. Quite excited about that. Uh, your collective commitment to Prosper ISD is what makes our district thrive. Thank you for choosing and supporting our schools. Mr. Van Wolf, you've got the invocation for us this evening.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together this evening. Lord, thank you for the countless blessings you bestowed upon Prosper ISD. Lord, we're grateful and we celebrate each day, the incredible educators, students, staff, and the community members you brought to us, Lord, to be what we call Prosper ISD, Lord. We ask that you watch over us tonight, Lord. We pray for wisdom and discernment as we discuss the matters of the district ahead, Lord, and we ask that you continue to protect this place and help us to thrive for many years to come, Lord. We owe it all to you, Lord, to help us live for you and help us to honor you in all that we do. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Can you please state for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
And then, Mr. Cavender, you have the board's vision.
The board's vision is into, is to ensure a safe and supportive educational environment that promotes academic excellence and opportunities, honors traditions, fosters student learning, facilitates effective recruitment and retention of talented educators, and grows all people at all levels.
Thank you, sir. As always, this meeting is being conducted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, as outlined in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. All of our voting must be conducted in public. However, we can privately discuss certain items, including but not limited to matters regarding individual employees, individual students, land acquisition and real estate, school safety and security, and issues that require legal advice. However, after that private discussion, any final vote must be in complete view of the public. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the agenda for tonight's meeting was posted for public viewing, um, three business days before the meeting. And then, you also have some future, uh, dates here in front of you. Also want to remind everybody that early voting is now going on. So, ask y'all to get out there and do your civic duty. Okay, that takes us to celebrations.
Wonderful. My favorite part of board meetings, celebrations. Tonight, we have the National Merit Scholarship Program semifinalists. We will be recognizing these semifinalists. Students represent less than 1% of the nation's high school graduating seniors. So, nation, not state, nation. They sit and take a test called the PSAT, and this is how they qualify. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for some 6,930 National Merit Scholarships worth nearly 26 million that will be offered next spring. Prosper ISD is proud to have 24 National Merit semifinalists. Like all of the students from Prosper High School, please come forward, because I have a pretty long queue. So I'm going to ask each one of you to just introduce yourself. Obviously, you know you're at Prosper High School. If you're not, you're going to pretend like you're at Prosper High School. You look like, yes, PHS. We'll start here. How is your name?
Hi, my name is Leary Goody Blatt. I'm at Prosper High School.
And you're a semifinalist, right? Okay, there we go. I love it.
Hi, my name is Dana Scherer, and I go to Prosper High School.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Rocker. I'm at Prosper High School.
Hi, I'm Katie Lee, and I go to Prosper High School.
Hi, I'm Dylan White, and I go to Prosper High School. So, I'm very proud to go to Prosper High School.
I'm Kenna Boyd, and I go to Prosper High School.
I'm Kiyati Kuzero, and I go to Prosper High School.
I'm Ongadade, and I go to Prosper High School.
I'm Arno Fugan, and I go to Prosper High School.
I'm Tater Spoddy, and I go to Prosper High School.
Okay, before you're off the hook, I have one more question. When did you move to Prosper? So what grade when you came to the school district? Oh, hi. We're glad you're here. Tell us your name.
Um, my name's Emily John, and I am from Prosper High School.
Excellent. You're with the right group then. So, when did you move to Prosper? Like, was it third grade, sixth grade?
Exactly, tenth grade.
Tenth grade?
Eighth, eighth.
Ten, three.
Sixth grade.
Third grade.
I go to Union College.
I'm a freshman year.
Well, technically, sixth grade, but wasn't in Prosper High School.
Uh, I took the SATs in my mind.
Eleventh grade.
Wow.
I'm a middle freshman year.
Okay, very good. I think it's always interesting to hear, so, our Lone Ranger of a K-12. So what schools did you go to? Elementary?
Um, I went to Cochran for preschool because I was into language for a year.
Okay.
And I went to Rucker until, like, Barnes and Bill. Then I went to, like, Barnes, Reynolds, and Prosper.
Perfect. Well, congratulations to you all. Stay right here, because we're going to take an official photo, and then the paparazzi know that your parents will want to take a photo also. Can you get on the desk?
Here we go. One, two, three.
And parents, if you want to come to the semifinalists, you can take a photo, please do that. Your kids have, they are shining stars for us, and we want you to make the most of the moment.
That's right.
Congratulations.
Great job.
We have one student from Richland High School, our brand-new high school. I'm Shubert. Yay! It's certainly a little bit of a shorter conversation, so, um, obviously, you know you're at Richland. Okay, tell us your names, so you get a chance to announce.
Hi, my name's Asholja. I'm at Richland High School.
Very good. How's Richland, how's it going?
Oh, it's great.
That's a good answer. We'll let Dr. Coy know that. He will appreciate that. So when did you move to Prosper?
Uh, I moved here my freshman year, so I've been, I've been going on for years.
Okay. Excellent. Well, we are glad that you're here. We're very proud of you and your parents here in line as well. We'll make sure that they get a chance to come and take a photo.
It's pretty neat.
Hey, next up, we have Rock Hill High School. So if you are a National Merit semifinalist from Rock Hill High School, please come forward. I don't know if you all noticed, but they perfectly lined up with four seats and then got, uh, all together to come up. Was that coordinated? Did y'all do that on purpose? Because if you did, just tell me that you did, because it was a surprise. All right, so tell us your names, and we know you're at Rock Hill High School.
My name is Mohan Nwane Turem, and I'm at Rock Hill High School.
Uh, my name is Preniel Mahalasker, and I go to Rock Hill High School.
Uh, my name is Dylan Kim. I'm the senior at Rock Hill High School.
My name is Replicatation. I go to Rock Hill High School.
Okay, so here's the question. When did you move to Prosper ISD?
I moved, like, two months into sixth grade.
Okay.
I moved in 2017, so I was in fourth grade.
I also moved in fourth grade.
I moved at the start of ninth grade.
Okay, you're very good. All right, well, congratulations. We're going to take our photo, and then parents, go ahead and get to the middle aisle, so we can take a photo.
Perfect, thank you.
Hey, everybody, please. Congratulations to you all. We also have gone on semifinalists, four and oh, by the way, to the one that Grove High School listed also.
There we go.
So, we're going to call it Grove High School. Will you please come forward? Okay, so, when's we get started? Any pictures?
My name's Lizzie Moffett.
My name's Monique Madoff.
My name is Cooper Brown.
Okay, and tell us, they're all from Monique Grove High School. When did you move to Prosper?
Uh, before fourth grade.
Uh, eighth grade.
I've been in Prosper my entire life.
Okay. Okay, so what's your pathway? Elementary, middle, high, what year?
Uh, I went to Folsom Elementary School, and then Rogers Middle School, and then Rock Hill.
Very good. Excellent. Congratulations to you all. We're going to take a photo, and then paparazzi parents. Congratulations. We did want to say thank you to the parents. You were the first teachers, and you were the ones who instilled that level of learning and drive and determination to really commit to that high academic standard. So, thank you, and thank you for choosing Prosper ISD as a parent or your child. Next, we have the Thompson Leadership Institute. The Thompson Principal Academy is in its 27th year of providing advanced leadership development programs to campus principals. The academy's goal is to assist successful principals in achieving, achieving even higher levels of leadership and proficiency. Admission to the academy is competitive, with a target class size of only approximately 25 participants. Prosper ISD is honored to have three principals selected to participate in this academy. Ms. Kathy Briggs. So I'm going to have each of these leaders kind of do something similar to what we just had our students do. They're going to share with you what campus that they lead, but also how long they've been in Prosper ISD.
I'm at Fort Elementary, and I have been at Prosper for 10 years.
I'm the principal at Baker Elementary, and I am in year three.
I am at Jonathan Elementary, and this is my 16th year.
Nice. Good. Excellent. Well, very proud of all three of them. I did a surprise visit. I thought they knew I was coming, and they were in their institute, I guess, a couple weeks ago, and I appear, and they're acting like shocked, and I think, and then I'm like, oh, they didn't know it was coming, so hello, here I am. So, it was a great surprise we had to see them. So we'll get a photo, and if any family wants to take a picture, please feel free to do so. We also have a group of principals who are participating in Into Learning Principal Institute. The Principals Institute is a year-long professional development series that provides a unique opportunity for principals to understand why transformation of public education is necessary and develop the knowledge and skills required to lead and build the capacity to sustain transformation over time. The future of Texas public schools depends on the quality of its leaders. I'm going to say that again. The future of Texas public schools depends on the quality of its leaders. Attending the Principals Institute allows principals to experience one of the most noteworthy professional growth opportunities in their careers and collaborate with innovative Principal Institute network that now stretches nationwide. Each year, 60 to 70 principals are selected to join Into Learning Principal Institute. Prosper ISD is honored to have three of our principals selected to join the elite cohort. Mr. Zach DeVito. This is Peggy McLean. And this is Ashley Chardron. So you're on the spot now. So you have to also share what campus you are leading, but also how long have you been in the district?
I'm the principal at Jones Middle School. This is year 14.
I'm the principal at Stuber Elementary, and this is year 19.
I'm the principal at Folsom Elementary, and this is year 18.
So you can see the longevity and the history of our principals and just the wealth of knowledge that they bring, but also not only their knowledge of public education and leading in Texas public schools, but also specifically Prosper ISD knowledge, which is absolutely valuable. Very proud of all of our principals who are in these different institutes. Our principals must grow, just like our students grow and our staff. So very proud to be able to provide this opportunity to these outstanding leaders. Did family pictures and that? Ashley, did you just tell your husband to sit down? Last but not least, we have the Prosper Education Foundation with us tonight. Dr. Keri Williamson and Quentin Chamberley and Josh Brown are president of the Education Foundation. Come on up, Jill. I see you're here, please.
I'm, I'm, yeah. I'm going to hear.
We would love to have.
No, I wasn't playing.
Okay, so a few things to note. This year marked the 17th Annual North Texas Giving Day, and it was nothing short of extraordinary thanks to our incredible community and supporters. The Prosper Education Foundation is incredibly grateful for the individuals, families, businesses, and sponsors who came together to give when our region needed it the most. On the day of giving, P E F raised over $103,000 to support Prosper ISD. Please insert a clap. But there's good news. If you haven't donated yet, there's no deadline. Contributions P E F can still be made anytime through North Texas Giving Day page. You know that website, and you can donate. Have to look up Prosper Education Foundation specifically. A huge thank you to our corporate donors, community partners, and supporters from around the world who made this success possible. These funds directly support programs that enhance educational excellence, innovation, and opportunity across Prosper ISD. Together, we're continuing to make a lasting impact on students, teachers, and the future of our community, and I could not be more proud as a superintendent of the work that this incredible education foundation does. Every chance I get to shout from the rooftops what the Education Foundation does for our school district, I take that opportunity. We have the absolute best of the best, and the leaders, small but yet mighty, with what they come to the table with to give back to our community. And it is because of our community that these things are possible. The principals that you saw in front of you, that cost money for them to be involved in those leadership institutes, but it's vitally important for those Texas public school educators who are leaders to be poured into. And because of things like Prosper Education Foundation, that's a possibility. Or for our students that are National Merit, being able to help them with AP exams and different scholarships for dual credit, the Education Foundation steps in once again. And then for our teachers to make sure that they have the proper training, that they're continuing to learn and grow, just as our students are and as our leaders are. Because in Prosper ISD, all needs all, and that means every leader, learner, and staff are learning together to make things better in this community. So thank you, thank you to Prosper Education Foundation for making that a possibility. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Do you want me to take the chair?
Sure.
I'll put it at two with the bank.
Absolutely.
Okay, that now brings us to intermission. Students, y'all are more than welcome to stay, but I know that y'all have got books to hit at home, and we will do our part to make for sure that y'all have got great educators and great buildings going forward. So y'all feel free to go home and study, and we will reconvene here in just a couple minutes' time. Thank y'all, and congratulations again. All right, we will now get into the superintendent's report.
Yes, so District-wide Gold Out Day for all of our campuses, for our community to be able to come together and really honor those who are fighting childhood cancer or have fought childhood cancer, and then certainly to bring awareness to that. So, Guiding Principal Number Four, "Together We Prosper as a Group." And then, PHS and Rock Hill High School Homecoming Parades. I know you all are probably looking at those and feel like it's a long time ago, because we're now in dedication season, but one of the great moments, I think, for each of our schools, to be able to bring our community together and how we prosper as we come together, and really just honoring that individuality at each of our campuses, because they have very unique personalities and traditions which we all love. And then, we got started with High School Superintendent Advisory Council, an outstanding group of young people who are really living out our Guiding Principal One of "Together We Champion," truly, probably one of my favorite things to do all year is to hear from our students and just think about how very fortunate and blessed we are in this district to have the quality of students that we have, who are willing to share and really be engaged and give feedback. We had a lot of great work that came out of that. They're working on the learner profile for us, which is a rewrite and redesign of our former graduate profile, but designed around our strategic priorities, which we also discussed during that time. So we'll get back together here in just a little bit, and we will hear from them. And then, as I said earlier, it is dedication season. We have Thompson on Wednesday Elementary and then Richland the following week, but we've already dedicated Mosley and Smotherman, and those are great ways to be able to not only celebrate the families and the namesakes, but also our, our district as a whole. Being grounded by a tradition and soaring to new beginnings is exactly what this is about and how we cultivate together. So such a, a great time to really just honor the stories of the past. And then campus tours. So we had Silver Stars last week. I want to say thank you to Mr. Crownover, who was, um, jumping in for me to lead that tour, so thank you, Mr. Crownover, for that. But really being able to give an experience of our families and visitors, and certainly our Silver Stars. But, Ms. Evans, I want to give her a shout out. No, she's not here today, because she's probably getting ready for a dedication on Wednesday, but she did a really nice job of just really taking a, a group that is of a certain age, and they've been removed from school for quite some time, but really explaining what it's like to be a student and a day in the life of a student at Thompson Elementary, and it was very beautifully done. So we'll probably be stealing that idea from her to then replicate it on our other tours. So, great job, Ms. Evans. And then our student enrollment continues to, to climb. We are just a little over additional 2,000 students, and you can see our overall enrollment is 33,659. Last year at this time, same time, was 31,613, and you can see how we break down by elementary, middle, and high school. We continue to have students enroll. I think there were about 19 last week that enrolled district-wide, so we see those numbers continue to climb. And then we have our bond projects from 2019 bond, as well as the 2023 bond. There's a little bit of a shorter video than what we usually play, because some of the projects have finished out.
Very excited about each of these projects that are headed our way as new. Next, we'll have an informational report. Mr. McLaughlin will actually do a proposed attendance boundaries, because as you build buildings and you keep growing, you get to do boundary changes.
Boundary changes. Good evening. October marks the first time we get to start talking about next year, and I'm bringing forward two proposals for your consideration and feedback. And so let me start first by saying that while opening schools is one of the most exciting things we do as a school district, we've all been part of the opening schools, and it's exciting for our staff, our students, and our families to walk into these beautiful schools that have been designed and built. This time also, for many people, marks time of hard change. This process is difficult for many families, so I want to acknowledge that, and also acknowledge that we don't take any of these recommendations lightly or without consideration or much discussion. And so the recommendations we come, we have considered the impact, and I would love to say that we could find a zoning, a map, that would be great for everybody. It's just not possible, so, um, you know, we try to do the best for, for the most and just acknowledge that while it's great for some, we might miss the mark for others. So, I want to start by talking a little bit about the process that we take to bring forward the recommendation tonight. Throughout the year, we look at economic trends in the nation, throughout the state, and more specifically in Dallas, Fort Worth, and then also closer to home, Prosper. We're looking at things like job growth in the nation and job growth in our area, what's spurring people to move to this, this part of the country. We're looking at things like interest rates and how those two things impact the housing trends in terms of new home building, the home resale market, and then how all of those things impact our student enrollment. We work with two different demographers quarterly, comparing the information that we're getting with what they see out there in other districts, and then what they are projecting that's coming down the road, so we kind of throw information back and forth. There's a group of us that work in different departments in the district that are looking at student enrollment weekly. We're count, we're looking at every student ad in schools, each and every school, and then that's what, we take all that information and we try to build a map that makes the most sense, and that's what I'm bringing forward to you tonight for your consideration and feedback. So let me start with Jim Bridges Middle School, which will be located near the corner of Frontier and Custer Road. Bridges is going to relieve both Rogers and Jones Middle School. Rogers is our largest enrollment middle school, and Jones is essentially tied for second, so Bridges will provide relief for both of those middle schools. So let me start first with our proposed boundaries for Rogers, which will include all the students that currently attend Folsom, and all of Cochran Elementary will be attending Rogers Middle School next year. And for Bridges, that attendance zone will be comprised of all of the students that currently attend Johnson Elementary, and then portions of Liliana and portions of Reeves Elementary. And I'll talk about each one of those schools in a little more depth. So let me start first with Liliana. The recommended changes, do not touch any current student's pathway to a high school. Liliana is already a split campus with some of the students on a pathway to attend Reynolds and then Prosper High School, and the other portion of Liliana is on a different pathway that ends at Walnut Grove. This recommendation does not change their high school feeder pattern. Students that attend- Students that attend Liliana but live in a neighborhood that is west of Coit will continue to attend Reynolds. That's the way it is right now. That will stay the same. Students that attend Liliana but live east of Coit, they will be zoned for the area that's highlighted in brown. They will go to Bridges and then on to Walnut Grove, with Coit Road beating the main dividing point for that campus. So for Reeves, this is a little busier. But Reeves will be, again, split between two middle schools. The area, again, highlighted in brown, that's outlined by four major roadways. Frontier and then Lott Howell Parkway turns into, on the north. So students that live south of Frontier, north of 380, and then in between Custer and Ridge Road will be zoned to attend Bridges Middle School and Walnut Grove High School. So that leaves the students east of Ridge Road. They will remain at Jones and then on to Rock Hill High School, with Ridge Road being the east-west divider between whether you attend Bridges or whether you attend Jones Middle School for students that currently attend Reeves Elementary. All right, so this is a broader view of the district map in regards to middle school. And so I just want to highlight the change there, the Bridges, which is in the darker brown on the east side and to the north. And then you can see Rogers, which is to the left, which will comprise of Cockrell and the Folsom Attendance Zone. Okay, so we're going to continue with our recommendation that rising eighth-grade students continue to have a choice if they are impacted by these zoning changes. So rising eighth graders that are impacted have the choice to either remain at their current middle school, which either be Jones or Rogers, and they can do so to finish their eighth-grade year. The only caveat is that no transportation will be provided, or they can choose to go to their new middle school, which would be Bridges. All right, so our second recommendation is to delay the opening of Watkins Middle School. I know that this decision will likely be met with mixed emotions from our school community, and I completely understand it. There's a lot of reasons behind this recommendation. I won't get into all of the reasons, but I do want to highlight a few of the key drivers of why we're recommending delaying the opening of Watkins Middle School for a year. So first, the primary driver, one of the primary drivers, is a budget deficit. You've seen this slide, Previous Board Meetings was presented, that we began the school year with a $29 million deficit. And so the opportunity that a school district has like this, where you can save millions of dollars and cut a deficit pretty significantly and do it in a way that doesn't cut either student programming or staff positions, that's very rare you can make those kind of decisions in a school district. In this moment in time, we think that we can absorb the growth and save millions of dollars without cutting a student program or a staff position. And that is one consideration that went into us making this recommendation. I mentioned before that we're looking at trends in data. And starting in about January, a lot of the data that we were looking at, the trends, support pausing the opening of Watkins, both in terms of economic, the job growth, the interest rates, and what we are seeing in the resale market, how fast homes are being sold and bought, and how quickly homes are being built, not just in our area, but also in all of Dallas, Fort Worth. The other trend that we've really been trying to keep a close eye on is what's going on with our neighbors throughout DFW. If you've been watching the news, you see the kind of the struggles that neighboring suburban districts, suburban and urban districts that are going through as their enrollment declines. They've been faced with some really hard decisions that are really difficult for communities to have to do things such as rezone and close schools. We are not in the position of declining enrollment. Dr. Ferguson mentioned that we added 20-some students this week. We added 20 the week before. So this moment in time, we're in the middle of fast growth. This offers us the opportunity to hit pause and get a clearer picture on what the future might bring to us without overbuilding schools. So this probably doesn't come as any surprise, but over the last six years, TEA tracks fast growth and provides an allotment for those school districts. And over the last six years in the state of Texas, KDISD is number one, Prosper ISD is number two. And so while we're in this growth and then while we think that we can absorb the growth that will come from the Reynolds Attendance Zone, the Reynolds and Mosley Attendance Zone, we feel like this decision sets us up for the future, both financially and in terms of the number of schools and where we build schools. Another factor in this decision is just the number of schools that we have opened in this community that would be impacted by the opening of another school. So since 2020, we've opened two middle schools west of the Dallas North Tollway. Since 2022, we've opened six total schools west of the Dallas North Tollway. And last year, we opened four schools, all west of the Dallas North Tollway. And that is the feedback that we got last year, specifically from families that lived in the neighborhoods of Creeks of Legacy, Legacy Gardens, and Star Trail. That was one of their significant concerns, is just they are living in the fastest-growing section of the fastest-growing school district in North Texas. And, you know, we heard a lot from families about how many times their kids have changed schools and the impact that had on their kids and families. This recommendation, if we move forward with it, would delay the move for another year. And students that live in those areas would continue to be zoned for Mosley, and the other students that are zoned for Reynolds would stay put as well. So we want to, since this change is unexpected, we want to honor our commitment that we made last year. We gave parents the choice that their students could choose to stay at Reynolds if they wanted to. And we want to honor that and that those students can continue to stay at Reynolds for the '26-'27 school year. And for those students who have siblings that are rising to sixth grade, we want to give the option that if they have a sibling that's in those neighborhoods that chose to stay, that they can attend Reynolds as well. We want to open that up for rising sixth graders. And again, the caveat would be that families would need to provide their own transportation. So just to summarize, we are recommending that students attending Reynolds and Mosley Middle School would remain at their current schools for '26-'27, with an eye to open Watkins Middle School to open '27-'28. We are going to seek feedback from our community, so families that are impacted by these middle school zoning recommendations will have the opportunity to provide feedback, and we will send that information out directly to those families in the Bridges, Rogers, and Watkins and Reynolds areas and Mosley. Okay, that was a lot. With that, questions?
Thank you. Did a good job, Mr. McLaughlin. Yeah, like you said, the rezoning of students is the least fun thing that we do. But we also know that there is some great things out there for the future on this. So any questions from anyone's comments at this point? We will have the listening circles like we've done in the past, so we will be available for people here. And we already have dates for these.
Yeah, we do, and we'll send those out straight to families, and then we'll take that feedback, and I'm sure that you guys will get feedback as well. And we will read through and listen to all the information that we give, and then I'll be bringing back a finalized recommendation for about next month.
Great, great job, Mr. McLaughlin. Just to clarify for those watching online or those in person, this is an informational report. Therefore, Mr. McLaughlin is proposing a plan, recommending that to the board. There will not be an action item until November on this zoning, so it will be a month away from now. So that way, we have plenty of time to collect information online through a forum, but also to be able to do those listening circles. I think that's key to our community, so they know that this is not the final, it's just the beginning. So, thank you very much. Excellent job.
Thanks, Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to consent agenda, item nine. You've all had a chance to review this. Is there a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Discussion on this. All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor? That is all seven of us, none opposed, so nine passes. That brings us to action items, number 10. Mr. Witt, I'm going to invite you to go ahead and come up. We have got, I'm going to talk about some tax bonds here.
All right, good evening. Thank you. It's good to be back, good to be with you. I do have the presentation tonight, and I'll just get started. As always, we start with a graph of the interest rate index. It's called the Bond Buyer's Index. It's a weekly index that you've seen from us in the past. To the far right, you can see that we've turned the corner, and interest rates here in the past couple of months have started coming back down. That blue bar in the middle is the average. So it's good to see that turn around and come back towards our average interest rates. That's the market that we're in. It will be applicable for the last slide of the presentation tonight, too, because there are some bonds that are outstanding from 2015-16 era that can be refinanced for savings in this environment. Primarily, we're here to talk about the bonds to be issued. This is your chart of authorized but unissued bonds. The 2019 bond election on the left, the 2023 bond election on the right. And then down at the bottom, we're proposing to issue the next installment of 250 million from the 2003 bond election, Proposition A. We'll talk about technology in a moment. We are not proposing the issuance of technology bonds at this point, although we do recognize the need for continuing addition of technology at your campuses, and I'll touch on that momentarily. And then this bond does not have any money for Proposition D. So the 250 million tying at two facilities. Number 21 will be money for that. You're in the middle of that. The Rucker rebuild finishing that, starting elementary number 22. Obviously, you just heard the report on the middle schools. You're finishing middle school eight, middle school seven, kind of in the middle, if you will, of that program. I'll be honest with you, it does not hurt my feelings that you are not opening middle school number seven immediately. That one year does mean something on our side as well. Not only is it an operational savings and strategic planning for changing data as it comes your way, that data is important on our side as well. So I just can be honest with you, it does not hurt my feelings that there is a little bit of a slowdown in that regard. Other facilities, campus additions, renovations, Reynolds and Rogers are undergoing that. Some administrative staff center, it'll be a part of that. And then the other projects at the bottom, technology, infrastructure, safety, security, transportation, and land. There's a question mark next to land. There's no identified land that we're going to spend this money on, but you are proactively in that market, and this bond money is allowed for that purpose and use. So as always, when we talk about bond issuance, we talk about taxable value. In 2020-21, your taxable value was 11 billion. In '24-'25, it was 22 and a half billion. '25-'26, we round that number off. It's 24.7 billion. We round it off because the reports that come out in January from the commtroller are what we use on year-in, year-out data comparison. The 24-7 is a close number to what it will. It's based on your certified value that comes out in July. So that's the reason that that number is rounded off. The fourth line on here is important. The '25-'26 taxable value growth was 2.1 billion. That was with the increased homestead exemption. We now have a second, recent, in a couple-year period, of increased homestead exemption, which takes away our taxable value. You would have grown 3.1 billion were it not for the homestead exemption. So that, to me, is my measurement of how fast we're growing and how much we're growing. When they do the homestead exemption, we get some version of hold harmless. So in our bond model, we change taxable value and revenues with hold harmless revenues. It's never dollar-for-dollar, so we have to continue to monitor that. Each bond has its own pedigree and its own hold harmless that it belongs to. So I'm going to spare you that hour and a half conversation, but just know that we're doing this two ways. Number one, what is our actual value, knowing that when it's reduced by homestead exemption increases, that we get some hold harmless for that. But for me, I need to know how fast we continue to grow. Several years ago, about four years ago, we changed from being purely homestead growth to commercial growth to go with it. So you went from a billion and a half type of grower to three and four billion dollars worth of growth, and that's very important to our bond model and our ability to build these schools and keep up with the population growth. So the next bullet point, the highest growth in the last five years was 4.2 billion on my apples-to-apples comparison, three and a half billion net of the homestead exemption. And in the last five years, our fifth year back, you were at a 1.9 billion. That's where we started turning the corner five years ago with the commercial to go along with the residential. Your INS fund balance has grown since 2020. It's right around 21 and a half million in August of 2025. It should grow. It needs to grow to keep up with the percentage of your overall INS budget. 21 and a half million currently is about 15% of your debt service budget. So people ask me all the time, you know, what number is correct? There is no correct number. 15% is a good number. In some years, we want to purposefully draw that down as we're building fast and opening such things as high schools, middle schools, and elementaries all in the same year. But in other years, we kind of want that to grow back up and try to maintain around 15%. If it gets to 20%, that's fine. If it gets down to 10%, that's fine. But that is what we use to manage this kind of day-in, day-out taxable value changes and what our bond model needs to have in terms of keeping up with the construction. So it's a good number. We do have plans to use some of it in the short term. But again, it's something we will continue to monitor to see where we need it to be in the future. So our planned issuance is 250 million. This is not any different than what you saw six months ago. We issued bonds in the summer. We had a plan of 300 million, 250 million, 150 million. It is based on your construction schedule, which is based on your demographic schedules, right? So we're on target for that. Tonight, we're asking for authorization to proceed with 250 million. That will keep you on track for the construction projects, as we discussed. The 150 million will be approved at a future agenda item. We will go through this same process with you as a whole, the board as a whole, along with the finance committee, obviously, with the administration. And that should be June 2026. That's a typo in that. So it's 250 million in December '25. June of 2026 is the 150 million. INS tax rate has remained at 50 cents. It's been at 50 cents as long as I can remember and take you back in this district. We're able to maintain that tax rate. Our bond capacity comes from growing of the tax base, no change in the tax rate. This one will be 29 and a half years, just slightly shorter than the 30 years that we normally do because it is a mid-year issuance. So a full-year issuance is when we do it in the summer going into the fiscal year. This is a mid-fiscal year issuance, so it's 29 and a half years. You'll still have the call feature of 10 years. That's your option to prepay the bonds early. Again, use of INS fund balance, some use of that 21 and a half million that has been built up by about 6 million over the past five years, and then some use of bond premium because it's an interim year financing. We have a budget set and so forth. Additional revenue, I touched on the hold harmless. That has to do with the additional homestead exemption. It is a bit challenging to, it is a lot of data. It's a lot of data just for Prosper ISD. If you multiply that times 1,000 school districts in Texas, it is an impact on the TEA and their ability to put that into their funding formulas. So there are times when the program will spit out a number that will make you very, very nervous. And we kind of go through it and say, they will correct it. They haven't been able to update the system yet, but it is a big part of our program now. And then down at the bottom, taxable value growth needed, approximately 3 billion in '26-'27 and 2 billion in '27-'28 to absorb this additional 250 million. So we're really working on a little over a year's worth of growth, but that's because we've accelerated from five years ago being like $250 million issuer per year to having to build the big high school and the middle schools and the regular elementary schools. And so we're now into about a year and a half's worth of growth to absorb this bond. That's not out of the ordinary, but that's kind of where we are. We've been growing at three-plus billion a year. So again, about a year and a half worth of growth to absorb this. I put this chart in here for a reason. What's in green is the principal, and what's in light blue is the interest on your outstanding bonds. I think there was a question when we did a remarketing of- of what's called a soft-put variable-rate bond that has a three-year rollover. It was really, you will go back to that. It's a Series B. There were two, there was one bond issued, but in two components, two tools. Series A, traditional fixed-rate bonds. Series B, in variable-rate soft-put bonds, to provide you an advantage of borrowing long-term bonds at short-term interest rates, to keep it simple. So we refinanced that last time, as we were expected, after three years. Remarket it is a better term. But it looks like that bond's way out there with no principal amortization for 20-plus years. Well, that's by design. But the other bond, the Series A component of that, was amortized fully in the first 20 years, where the other one was out. If you put them together and issue a traditional bond, it's going to be a 30-year amortization in which principal is paid in each and every year over that 30-year period. So you can't take one tool that we've done out of, you know, 30 series of bonds that are outstanding, isolate it, and say, what about this? You have to see it in the aggregate. I'm pointing out there that that's a very, very normal schedule for anyone. And you're, as you already know, rapid, fast growth, okay? So you see that principal's paid in each and every year, just like a home mortgage. If you pulled up a home mortgage and said, what's my principal and interest over time? It would have that exact diagonal running straight up from there. So for the audience, I want them to know that what we're doing is within the realms of school finance in Texas. We remain a AA credit by independent credit rating agencies. We have people lining up to invest their money as institutional investors who do their own credit research on our ability to repay the bonds and operate as an institution. So principal is being amortized in each and every year. The yellow bars on top are the layering in of the 250 million. All right, so the other thing we're doing is some housekeeping, if you will. There's about $2-plus million of savings by refinancing some older bonds. Those older bonds are identified on this schedule. The 2015 bond, the 2016 bond. We will not be able to refund all of these bonds. We will be targeting those with the higher coupon in the maturity levels that provide savings. So for lack of a better term, we go in and take bond number one, bond number two, and we surgically pull out the maturities that provide interest cost savings, and we leave in the bonds that are outstanding at low interest rates that do not provide any savings. So I don't know what term you want to use. Surgical sounds more sophisticated. We use cherry pick in our business, too. We cherry pick those that make sense. It's not a game changer for you. These are relatively smaller bonds. Many of them have low coupon interest rates on them. It's about 2 million plus in savings. That used to be a very big number. It is a big number. It is something that you should do. It is squeezing the juice out of those bonds as best we can. It's not a big game changer where we're saving 200 million on a series of bond refundings or something like that. It does provide the statistic. You'll see their present value savings as a percent of the refunded bonds. There's an industry rule of thumb that says, if a refunding produces savings divided by the amount of bonds you're refunding of 3%, then it's a refunding worthy of consideration. This one's probably in the 5% range. We're setting the parameter in the order that we have to get at least 3%. But right now, in today's market, it's running about over 5% and over $2 million worth of savings. So basic blocking and tackling of what we do, there's a refunding opportunity for some old bonds out there. So on the schedule of events, obviously, we're in constant contact with the administration on managing our bond program. We met September in preparation for where we are today. We met with the finance committee last week, where we take a deeper dive into a lot of these numbers and so forth in case there are any questions. We're here tonight with the PowerPoint presentation. If there's any questions, feel free to ask them. I'll be happy to answer. But if I had you through the detail, it would take up an hour and a half, and I'm already long-winded, as it is tonight. But it's an opportunity for new members of the finance committee, with existing ones, to kind of go through and see where we've been, where we are today versus where we said we were, and then start talking about the next one as we go forward. There are two action items on your agenda tonight. The one is for the bonds. Adopt an order authorizing the issuance of the unlimited tax bonds. That includes both the refunding and the new money. Then the next one is to consider and adopt a resolution expressing official intent to reimburse cost of projects, what we call a reimbursement resolution. It's very common. This is really designated because in the staff meeting, we began talking about technology and how much of that Proposition B that we've used and how much do we want to issue. And it's basically about 5 million now and 5 million six months from now, or some number like that. And my recommendation for the administration was, let's stick with 250 million for the long-term school facilities. Just for the record for everyone in the audience, even though you have a bond election that allocates for buildings and technology, and some of our bonds are amortized over 30 years with an option to prepay in 10 years, our technology is amortized in the short term, even if it's a part of that bond program. So we're not, let me repeat, not doing 30-year bonds for technology, okay? In this particular case, in looking at the need for technology, we have the ability in the general operating side to maybe buy that technology on schedule, irregardless of my bond timing. And then if you spent 5 million for technology because it was needed, the next time we issue bonds, if I can allocate that amortization in the early part of the bond amortization for the technology component of that bond program, that makes that bond model work better. So in this particular case, I felt like we can go ahead and keep up with your technology. You have a very good general fund balance. I know it's under stress, not only in this district, but in districts throughout the state, and in particular, fast-growing districts. You get the double whammy. But with that said, I would like to defer the issuance of the technology component to a later date for the reasons that I just explained, but not slow down your technology purchases to keep up with your growth. And so we do that by stating our intent under federal law upfront that we're going to spend this money, and then when we sell the bonds, we're going to reimburse that. Perfectly legal, done every day, but we do have to state that intent upfront. The federal government won't let us go spend it and then just come back and say, oh, yeah, we want to pay for it out of this. We have to state that intent at the time. So that's why that's on your agenda. It's a recommendation from me. If you have any questions on that, I'm happy to do it. And then we're probably looking at marketing in December, closing in January. So technically, these will be Series 2026 bonds. And then we'll go from there, but it'll keep you on schedule with those construction projects that we mentioned. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have regarding the program.
Yeah, so just for clarity, you know, we use general fund on both MNO and INS side, right? And so this, the general fund you're talking about, that we would pull the intent reimburse is from the INS general fund that you talked about on a previous slide?
In this particular case, this is, we don't, that's a very, very good question. And I'm glad you asked the question, because now I can explain. The INS fund balance cannot be used for that technology purchase. It can only be used under law for the bonds that were issued.
Okay.
So what we have to do is use the money temporarily from the general fund to buy the equipment and then reimburse the general fund out of bond proceeds.
Yes.
But the INS money stays for principal and interest, not bond proceeds, which is the original issuance.
Thank you.
And so, you know, how does this look on your budget? I think your budget is your budget. This is a temporary use of that money, knowing that we have a set of money to reimburse that at a later date. Very good question.
Okay, other questions? I'll take this time to say thank you again, Mr. Witt, and then finance committee as well. As y'all saw, y'all did meet on the 17th of this month to discuss that. Kind of went into great detail on that. Anything special to add out of that from you three in there?
Yeah, no, I would just add for those not in the room, we get a chance to go pretty deep with Mr. Witt, and he's very gracious with his time. I think we took maybe double the time allocated, but got all our questions answered. So when we come to discuss this in this setting, we feel pretty well-equipped walking into what we're doing, what we've done, and more importantly, what we're doing going forward. So, Mr. Witt, Ms. Roy, thank you guys for the time, not just preparing it, but also the time Friday going deep into it. So I will say, I feel confident proceeding based upon that.
Perfect, thank you.
Well said.
Okay, with that being said, on 10A, I will go ahead and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that the board adopt an order authorizing the issuance of unlimited tax bonds, establishing self parameters, authorizing the execution of a bond purchase agreement, approving an official statement, and enacting other provisions related to the subject.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Any discussion or further questions for Mr. Witt while we have him up here?
I have one final statement. As y'all well know, I'm not a salesperson. I'm a glass-half-empty. I'm a finance guy. I want to make sure that everything is good. When you look at this, you're to be commended for the massive amount of growth that you have gone through to get to this point without a financial bond model hiccup. It's a remarkable story. People view me as an advocate for you or whatever, but I'm somewhat independent here. I'm going to read you a quote from Independent Credit Rating Agency. Strong management team with ample experience managing through rapid growth, the ability to maintain a AA rating in this massive amount of what you're doing. I'm one small part of this overall enterprise. It's overwhelming to me to think about all of the other factors that are impacted by this massive amount of growth and the challenges you face. And that's on top of what every other school district is facing as an enterprise where public schools are not easy. It's harder today than it's ever been. I'm a son of educators. So I grew up, you know, starting 58 years ago with it. And I know what it was like then, and I know what it's like now. So I'm just, I'm going to take up just a moment to tell you thank you for what you put in to this massive enterprise and the speed with which this train is moving, and doing it and maintaining high financial integrity. So thank you for letting me be a small part of it.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? That is all seven of us, none opposed. So 10A passes. That takes us to 10B, the other part of it. Consideration, consider and adopt a resolution expressing official intent to reimburse cost of projects. Already had a good explanation on that. I will go ahead and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that the board adopt a resolution expressing official intent to reimburse costs of projects.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Any discussion on this? Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor? That is all seven of us, none opposed. So 10B passes. All right, that brings us to 10C. Consideration, possible action to award renovation projects for current Rucker Elementary, Folsom Elementary, Baker Elementary, Cockrell Elementary, Light Farms Elementary, and the Ship PHS. Is there a motion on this one? Oh, I'm so sorry. I got in the zone there, Mr. Shirley.
No worries. Good evening, board. I just want to... I still can. I'm here tonight for a recommendation for a general contractor for six projects that are listed here. These projects, we are projecting to start within the next five years. Not necessarily start and finish, but start within the next five years. And clearly, you can see that the Folsom, Baker, Cockrell, and Light Farms, what we're looking at doing out there is something very similar. New roofs, new HVAC units that are needed, some lighting that needs to be upgraded, as well as interior finishes such as the flooring and paint. We'll begin, we'd like to begin the Folsom work this summer, and then each year, add another school to that. The Prosper High School is very similar to those four. There is a small addition that we're looking at making at Prosper High School. And that's why you'll see an increase in our budgeted cost for that campus, as well as the increased square footage. And then at Rucker, a little bit of that allocated there, the 5 million is for some work that we'll need to do to get our staff to be working out of that building once our new Rucker opens. And it's, the large part of it, though, is allocated if we need to do some renovations to get students back in there if we have an overflow, Pre-K in particular. If we need to use that money, that's what it'd be there for. Clearly, if we don't need it, we won't. We had five general contractors that submitted proposals for this work. Two were very competitive. But going through the evaluation of all of the criteria, we're recommending tonight POG construction. They ranked the highest in that evaluation. Tonight, we have groups from POG here. Robie Bledsoe, Landy Freely, Tommy Freely, Brandon Colquitt, Bradley Dorr, and James Pearson here tonight. We've had a great relationship with POG over the years. The unique thing about these renovations is they constructed five of these buildings. And so they have a familiarity with the space itself. So tonight, we're here to recommend a POG construction for these projects.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Shirley. Okay, let's go ahead and let's do the motion part of it, and then we can have discussion on this. And Mr. Shirley, if you stick around for just a second in case there are questions, then I'll also see Robie and Brandon sitting out there in case we have anything as well. Is there a motion on this?
Sure. I move that the board award renovation projects for current Rucker Elementary School, Folsom Elementary School, Baker Elementary School, Cockrell Elementary School, Light Farms Elementary School, and Prosper High School to POG construction.
All right, thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Okay, discussion, questions on this?
Yeah, I just said I'll abstain from voting for professional reasons.
Sure, thank you.
We had a great turnout this year with five contractors bidding. I know we, did we update our RFP? Is that what drew the additional contractors in? I mean, typically, we have one and...
I'm not sure that that's what brought it in. There were some folks that have never bid jobs out here that put in proposals. We were surprised to see that ourselves.
And then you made the comment that some of these projects won't start for up to five years. I mean, is that common that we go ahead and award a project today for something that may not start for four or five years in the future?
I think that our recommendation in that regard is that, based on the information that was shared tonight, it's all going to be based on our bonding capacity. Generally, we're in that 15- to 20-year range. If we can time these projects right, the procurement of materials at a better rate would be to our benefit. But I think, long-term, it would be best. It's easier for us to move if we have the bonding capacity to move. And clearly, you guys are aware that some of the new construction slowed down, so that's allowed us to get in and use some of that bond funds to do some renovations.
Mr. Shirley, a few months ago, we had talked about updating our construction contract. Is this RFP on the existing contract, or did we redo the contract?
It's, to my knowledge, not on the existing one, but we're having conversations about whether we go back and renegotiate that new contract.
So it's on the existing, or we're going to do a new contract?
It's on the existing one. It's the current one that we had. Because if we go back to time, it was August 28th when we had our meeting when the contract and the RFP was discussed. The RFQ had to be on the street by September 11th. So in order for our business department to get that going, and then considering this is the construction department, and we opened four schools and two renovations, there were little boots on the ground. So we will get to that, no doubt. And the reason that we did have so many contractors show up is the economy is somewhat struggling, has been the theme of tonight. But also, when you put this number of projects out on the street, you also get a lot of people showing up interested because of what Mr. Shirley just talked about with procurement, bringing in those supplies, but also securing subcontractors for work. Any other questions for Mr. Shirley?
Okay. Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. All opposed? One, and then abstain on that. Okay, motion passes on 10C. That now takes us to closed session. We will now recess into closed session. We will now recess into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Section 071, 072, 074, and 076. Thank you so much for coming this evening. Now, 8:50 PM, and we are back from closed session. That will take us to number 12A. Consideration and possible action regarding hiring of contract personnel. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
There we go. I move that the board approve the hiring of contract personnel as presented by administration. Thank you, Mr. Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. All in favor? That is all seven of us, none opposed. That passes. That brings us to number 13. Adjournment, all right. I guess go Eagles, go Blue Hawks, go Wildcats, and go Raiders this weekend. Thank you so much. Good night.